I would like to call to order the meeting of the Cohasset Select Board on June thirteenth at six oh three P M. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohat, the town Cohasset's Facebook page, which can be accessed through a link on our website. The public's invited to watch us on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided. And ask questions during the first part of the meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate on when called upon by the chair. Board members will be asked, will be able to ask questions of any participant. Members of the public who wish to ask questions during the initial portion, i.e. non-goal setting part of this meeting, will be asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide, excuse me, the members of the public must provide their full name and address to the public record. Please note that comments on platforms will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset one four three T and for one four three TV and other Zoom platforms. So I first like to call to do a roll call though, Mr. Plex. Are you here?
He said it was a book.
Yes, sorry.
First Plex here.
Paul Gray, present.
Oh, Jack Gray, here.
Helen Mar, present.
Jeanne Hailey Diplo, present.
Hey, why don't we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is very public, but which is one nation under God, indivisible, with everything he can just for all.
So tonight, before we go into our annual goal-setting workshop, which is really a working group, so the select board to come up with goals that we will then typically vote upon at the next meeting. We are going to hear from our state representatives. But before we do that, we're going to do some capital transfers first. And so I would invite Ms. Leary and Ms. Mullen to provide us with information. So we're going to start with the item at six twenty-five because we're still waiting for Senator Clinton. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium because the recording can only pick up if you're near the mic. That's fine.
So what we're looking to transfer from annual town meeting of two thousand and twenty-one, there was a vote to replace the turf and track that along my field. Because of a change order, we came up one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars short. The change order was for additional drainage and to repay the surface below the track because it was, there was uneven surfacing and in order to make the project whole and to get the benefit of all the warranties, we had to repay that surface. So what we're asking to do is transfer funds from project number three, which is the Deer Hill Air Hamblers, which we put out to bid now twice and received no bids back on of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for project number ten, which is the track replacement. The other transfer we're looking for is transfer funds from project number eighteen, the salt shed of forty thousand dollars to project number thirteen, which is the twenty-year road replacement. The reason for that, you'll see in the next article, we're going to make the annual road paving plan whole by transferring additional money. So, so in Oton meeting twenty twenty-two, Article Eight Capital Improvements Plan, transfer funds from project number seven, which is the annual road paving of forty thousand dollars to project number six, the four-wheel driver catapulter came in thirty-eight thousand and some odd dollars over the estimated value. So we're looking to do those transfers and the reason we're transferring money from the salt shed to the road replacement is to make it whole in the end because we're taking forty thousand out in the following year.
Are any questions? Any questions, please? Was there a salt shed? Did we come in under?
We came in under a salt shed, yes.
Okay, okay. And suppose I have a general question. When we get change orders that seemingly should have been accounted for in the original project in bid, how do we handle that?
So typically, when there's a change order of any magnitude, we would go back to capital budget, advisory, C P C, if necessary, to see if we can get the additional funds. Because if the project is voted on for a million dollars and it goes over, we try not to have change orders or we try to build enough contingency into a project so we don't have those change orders. In this case, it was just a tight budget and this change order came in because there was an additional surveying done to the field prior to sending a bid out. So had that had been done, we may have not encountered this, but we don't know.
Is there any further discussion? Would you like us to vote on these separately or as one? Give.
One vote.
And entertain a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion just to verify for the record to transfer from the article from the A T M two thousand and twenty-one, Article Nine Capital Improvement Budget and A T M two thousand and twenty-two, Article Eight Capital Improvement Budget, the transfers that Mr. Leary set out. All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
No posts. So, thank you. So we have our state representative here. Would you like to start or do you want us to wait any longer for Senator?
The hearing is about ten minutes away. It's up to the chair to decide if we can get started and to have to do that.
Yeah, why don't you start because he might, he might be able to, you might be able to answer some questions as well before we get to this.
Well, so greetings from the hill. Those who don't know me online, I'm State Representative Youngskeen, representing Hingham Hall and the beautiful town Cohasset. I just wanted to start by saying congratulations for our two board members. The Senator and I are both excited for you, having been selected for a while myself and Paul. I can tell you it's a fascinating job. It's not what you thought it was going to be. I mean that in a positive rate way. It's unexpectedly interesting and I enjoy it tremendously. I'm sure, no, we haven't met you both. I'm sure you both go too. And the Senator and I have both appeared to support and help your work. And so I happened to set aside time privately to meet with you on whatever you need to do, except just reach out. So what we probably do is the chair had requested we come in and there was a series of questions that the board was interested in. But before we did that, we did just say we would be remiss if we didn't give you a brief update. So the Senator and I thought we would do is walk you through and when he gets here, he'll be listening talking. So you don't have to listen to my raspy voice. Without walking through the F Y twenty-four budget update, that process is going on right now. It was initiated with the governor's House One. It goes to the House First. The House voted its version of the budget in April. The Senate voted its version of the budget in May. And it has been assigned to a conference committee that has already undertaken that work and will be continuing and we'll talk to some details about that in a few minutes. We also wanted to give you a couple of updates on transportation, something that Cohasset has been working really hard on, but commuter rail and your advocacy to retain the ferries. So we wanted to just give you a quick update on that. We wanted to talk a little bit about roads and sidewalks and I know in particular Elm Street is that quarter is hugely important to you. I know you had some questions about MSBA and municipal facilities as well as remote voting. So we can walk our way through all of those things as well. I just wanted to start, like you said, with a budget update. Fifty-six billion, yes, with the B budget plan for fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. I will just say that from my part, I haven't looked at the Senate budget as in-depth as the House budget, but I do really feel like that this is a budget that invests in people. It's a budget that's about services and most notably and important for Cohasset as well is it's a budget that's green. So which I think is, it's really important. On some of the basics, stabilization fund is projected to reach just over nine billion dollars. Usually important to us, you know, we've been through a series, a period of a pretty intense spending through federal dollars and what have you. And people are concerned that once that federal spending is done, that there can see some contractions. We want to make sure that we do not at any time have to think about N I C cuts and things like that. We want to make sure that we are supporting our Commonwealth and particularly our municipalities. I do think that this is a budget that supports municipalities. In particular, it was six and a half billion dollars for chapter seventy, which is education funding, which is almost a ten percent increase over F Y twenty-seven. And I just want to note that it does fully fund a third-year phase in the Student Opportunity Act, which is the act where by we really invested in educating poor students who live in poor districts and really raised, make sure that we're investing in equity and education across the state. It's one point two billion dollars in unrestricted government monies coming in. Again, an increase over, I think it's a twenty-four point six million dollar increase over F Y twenty-three. And we should watch the conference committee closely because Senate actually did include more than the House did. So we should all be advocating for, don't tell the speaker I said this, but we should be advocating for the Senate number and get that up there. It was notably, and I know this is something that that we've all mentioned before, one point five billion dollars in early education care system. And one that I always add because, you know, I tell you briefly about libraries. It's forty-three million dollars to libraries. So it's fully funded. Oh, here it comes. The budget, as I said, is currently in conference committee and almost on cue, Senator walks in. He's very fortunate that he has actually been named to the bud, excuse me, the Budget Council Committee. So we have our man on the inside, if you will, who is going to take this best and I out for our district and for the state hall as well as we can. So, sorry, we just started.
Oh, it's okay. Sorry, sorry being late. Traffic is ridiculous from Boston. It really is. It takes about an hour and like thirty-five minutes now to get to anywhere in the South Shore. So didn't time it so properly, but I'm glad to be here and presenting to you guys.
Yeah, so we just started walking through the budget recap a little bit. And we were just, while you get yourself oriented, I had mentioned that we had added in an item to share about the green budget. It's important to you. I know that question was Williams and you guys have been doing a lot of planning. They were very mindful of the public management plan and the different initiatives we have in the town. And so there, I did want to just, I gave you two money in the budget for climate adaptation and preparedness since that would be money that would be, you know, available to towns like Cohasset. D C R funding was also increased and D E R funding was also increased. And those are important to you on Bucksey Park, but also all of your environmental restoration. So I'll let you.
Sure.
You have them all updated anyway, so.
No, and just go to, going to the budget, you know, another very successful year in the Commonwealth. Last fiscal year, we were able to turn, return over three billion dollars through sixty-two F. April took a hit as far as revenue goes from the Commonwealth, but it was an anticipated hit that happened in a mixture of corporations being able to restructure some of their obligations to the state or pass-through entities as well as a reduction in capital gains, which were anticipated just off of the different financial mechanisms that were made available to corporations over the past few years during the pandemic and opened up opportunities for the state to have more creative financing. So we don't anticipate that that's going to continue and May's numbers were already back up well above benchmark, over a hundred million dollars. So the state's in very good financial shape as Joe and I'm sure had recognized as well, we have nine billion dollars in our stabilization fund, the most that that has ever been. So I think that there's enough in there to withstand any sort of federal economic downturn that might take place. We don't see any indicators as far as our economy here in Massachusetts taking any real significant hits. Are we going to see revenues come in like they did over the past few years with all the federal money in the economy and all those other things? Probably not. But we still have great confidence that our businesses are strong here. Our communities are incredibly strong and that's going to continue to allow us to have a robust economy. Inside of this too, you know,
We did go for that.
Yeah, but in one of the things, so when you look at your numbers that you get, one of the things that I made note of, so obviously every year it's, you know, a two to three percent increase as far as the funding goes from the state to the town of Cohasset. With budgetary aid, chapter seventy, the town is going to chip in two point nine five million dollars of the the town's obligations to the schools and then unrestricted six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. One of the things that I spoke about during the Senate budget debate was that with new growth, as difficult as it is now with the amount of development that has already occurred in our communities and with the changes inside of education in particular, when you look at special education and medically complex kids being able to, you know, thank God due to the marvels of modern medicine, be able to live longer. But those obligations, those funding obligations being placed on communities and that hasn't been picked up yet by the state and it really hasn't been acknowledged, in my opinion, by the state. It is by myself, Representative Muschino. But there is a lot of work the state has to do as far as the future of funding communities at a much higher rate. We're doing it right now and it's working as far as the Student Opportunity Act goes. But we're really looking at about twenty-five different communities. They're getting well over ninety percent of that funding. My hope is that once that's fully funded, we could look at the fact that we have been able to invest over a half billion dollars annually for the past three fiscal years. And once the fully funding of those school districts come in, Student Opportunity Act expires, we can then look to see what we can do at other school districts because we hear it all the time from the school committee, from when we're doing presentations. You know, back a few years ago and even the presentation that we just had is that our school districts are struggling. New growth isn't coming in the way that it used to in our communities because of the fact that most have been developed, the developmental land. And we need to do more at the state level. And we, I spoke on this during the Senate debate, spoke into the education chair after that. And my hope is that we can get some movement on actually making these numbers, you know, not just have them be twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars a kid per pupil expenditure going up, but actually put a significant and real monetized investment into our communities that makes sense. And it's actually going to make a difference on the bottom line because what happened to hang in this past year with the override is going to be a domino effect throughout most of the, I would say, operated middle-class communities inside, inside of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the real fear is it's already happened is the community is going to reject overrides. And then the only place left to go is to cut. And we don't want to see that happen in a state that's so prosperous and that has so much opportunity to really take what we've been able to do to the next level.
Never question. Sure. Let me keep going because it's hard for you to reject. Don't worry.
No, 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 no.
I can just pop in.
May, maybe ask questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
That are topical to what you just spoke about. So when you're talking about, you know, when the, the CARES Act expires and then try to get more money to the schools, is, are you thinking specifically of that eighteen to twenty-two age range where we own students in special education? You know, did their costs for, because they don't age out like a, like a gen ed kid does at eighteen or as a senior in high school.
So, so right now, the out-of-school placements are going up fourteen percent. It's my expectation that we're going to cover that. So every school district that's going up, they're, they're out-of-school district placements are going up fourteen percent. The governor filed a supplemental budget to cover those. The way in which that they determine which schools were eligible and which schools weren't eligible is something that I have a problem with because it's, you had to spend a certain amount of money on your overall budget on the special education component. But I do think between the House and Senate, we're going to resolve that and just say, it doesn't matter what you spent, the, the, you know, the expenses are going up fourteen percent, we should cover that expense. And we are, and I do anticipate that happening. But then moving forward, the Student Opportunity Act, once that is fully funded in three years, I think we have to reimagine what chapter seventy funding looks like. And it can't just be, you know, twenty-five bucks or fifty bucks. It has to be an actual reflection of what the school districts' expenses are, what their needs are, and not just general education needs and not just special education needs, but also capital needs.
It has to evolve with the, to meet the needs. One of the biggest pieces that drives chapter seventy is moments. Pretty much across the board, moments going down in most places. So it really does, we really do need to start thinking about it seriously. Just to update and to keep pace with what, what to meet the needs of communities across the board.
It is every single one of our colleagues. So, you know, when we talk to them, it's, this is happening everywhere throughout the entire state. It's because, you know, we were able to get by for a lot of years with, you know, the new growth or the fact that, you know, collective bargaining, when it came in a lot, you know, a lot lower than you anticipated or one of these different figures and metrics that drive up educational expenses in particular, that, you know, they weren't happening as rapidly as they are now. But now when you're seeing three, four, five, six percent growth inside of the education budget and you're not seeing that come from the tax base capped at two and a half and you're not seeing it come from new growth, then your only other spoke of this wheel is the state and the state's only increasing two to three percent. So it's just, it's not there.
Yeah, our meeting needs, we presented to the school board on things like in, in, in district transfers, transportation components.
School, school meals.
School meals. Not said. Circuit breaker. So, so we did have that conversation with the school committee about the other places that notables, you know, ways for their benefits. So everyone knows we have had a more detailed conversation with them.
Yeah, I just want to be, you know, be fully cognizant that we're aware of these challenges. And I think that this is something that we have to, within the next two fiscal years, come to a head on is that our, our communities everywhere are going to start struggling to pay their bills.
And just so you all know, we walked through the door and our respective chambers, you know, the first thing we're talking about is our municipalities and municipal work. So that it has to stay strong. So I don't think anyone would be surprised to hear us continue to advocate one of those lines. So, yeah. Catch your back.
Thank you.
And then Cohasset and the budget, we were able to secure just member-directed spending through the House and the Senate. Ten thousand dollars for the Safe Harbor Youth Ambassadors. They came to the State House and advocated for some additional funding to increase that. I think it's an awesome program. I'm glad that we were able to get some funding for that. Sixty-five thousand dollars for Champ Study. This was something that Representative Muschino really spearheaded, actually in this very room, bringing a group of housing authorities, including Cohasset's together to talk about the Champ Study. The long and the short of it is the state changed the way in which that they process applications for housing authorities. And it should, the whole system is just messed up. It doesn't work. People are not being able to fill units they have available and other people are having to wait for, you know, for an instance, they're going to have to wait for somebody from Pittsfield to turn down a unit in Cohasset before they can offer to anyone else. And that could be sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty days, depending on whether or not that person actually gets back to them, how many notices they have to have. It's this whole sort of bureaucracy they've created around, around housing authorities that needs to be readjusted. And so this sixty-five thousand dollars will actually go to the University of Massachusetts, Donahue Institute, to come up with how do we actually get best practices out of our housing authorities.
Huge shout out to sorry, Jonathan McPhee, that brought it to us. So you're housing the front.
Forty thousand dollars for animal control vehicle to be split between Cohasset and Norwell and then Raising Hearts, which is building community around autism, which is a base from residents of Cohasset. They're going to be opening up a physical location in Hanover. But we're, we're able to meet with them and secure them a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget to really start to put some seed money into that. I think what they're doing is awesome. And it started here and it's great to spread a lot of what is great about the South Shore across the state.
Oh, I guess it's been, so just a quick on transportation. Thank you for all of your advocacy on helping to save ferries. I did just want to follow up really quickly and let the board know that we have continued to pursue that conversation and we met recently with Secretary Pian Daca. They have assured me that there is a strong commitment to ferries, to integrating that into the larger transportation network. And we will be continuing that conversation and I just look forward to the town of Cohasset's continued participation, having you support me in that way. As I get in there, it really does. And to collaborate with the South Shore towns, really, it really does give me a good ability to be able to get in there and make sure that transportation, both ferries and commuter rail are like, like minds. We're getting to the city, get back. Some people came down here for economic development and tourism, et cetera. On the, the, the commuter rail, I had put forward a project proposal in the M B T A's capital improvement, capital investments, C I, plan, C I P. They've taken the first steps and part of it would be for Cohasset to eliminate double track as well as for middle bar to eliminate, excuse me, to eliminate a piece of single track and double track as well as in middle bar as well. And I continue to advocate for the real choke point, which is is up by Seven Hill. There's a single track choke point there. As you know, that's why the schedule doesn't work. These first two projects will allow them to have bidirectional hourly service, which is a huge improvement over the service we have right now. And what we're really hoping is that by starting there, we'll be able to grow the ridership back, make the case for the larger investment. Cause that's like a mile worth of track up by side development. That's a big project. So we're just continuing to advocate for that access down both to our anchor, which is our economic anchor, which is Boston, but also down to the South Shore. So both ways, so that we're unveiling ourselves of all of the amenities and the work up and bottom, but in medical and all the things you know, and people are able to come down to us both for work and for tourism and everything.
Then there were some specific questions that we wanted to, you know, kind of address as far as roads and sidewalks to begin with. We know that there are really, you know, multiple projects, but two in particular that were addressed to us. And we've outlined sort of the complete streets and shared streets grant programs that we think the community would be would be eligible for, as well as us were able to, you know, try and shepherd this through that process. And so we've outlined how to, you know, apply for that, the limitations, all those certain things, complete streets. Cohasset was awarded a few years ago, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars through that for the town common pedestrian access. And so a lot of communities, you know, after a few fiscal years of not being able to get funding, our hope is that we'll be able to, to work with the town and get all the different information forward.
All right.
And we recently applied under the one-stop shopping.
Yep.
For two. And so we're, we're hopeful that something may make them out of that.
So it's basically page nine and ten. We we identified community one stop for growth too, which I think is a really good way in which to streamline the process of grants where under Governor, former Governor Baker, communities can submit projects and rather than chasing down the grants, they submit the projects and in turn the state then looks at what projects they are and sees what grant opportunities might be able to fit for those specific projects. And so they've kind of turned it from being on the community to chase the stuff down to actually being on the state, identify the projects that you have in the pipeline and find the funding that works.
So for instance, Senator, we put in Elm Street where we put in well, things of A D A accessible, which we have put in for those A D A in Elm Streets, you know. So we would just submit that and I mean, the, the application process is rather agonizing, but it was kind of binding. And so we just submitted to the state and we were interested.
So I think you already did submit it to the state.
We committed the application.
The applications. They weren't funded. We tried to get money in through, during the office spending. We tried to get money into, into something, we did get it into the economic development bond bill, but then that ended up not moving forward because of the questions around sixty-two F. No ones were passing in the session, formal session. We couldn't vote it because bonding requires a vote. So we're still mindful of the projects, but that's exactly a great reason why you should be applying for these things because the state has started doing things like that where they'll go and look and see. And that, that was exactly what the administration did was they went and looked to see what are the projects that are real in your community? What are you committing time and energy and staff time to? And, you know, what do you think you need? So I think that was something we learned. And, you know, what do you think you need? So I think that was something we learned that came out really well during the pandemic and some of this. The spending and I think that's why you see it start to flip because that worked really well. So we're mindful of the projects you have as well. And I think the state is really, what I understood anyway, was the state is really looking to see what you're applying for. It doesn't necessarily make the threshold, but how they can come back through.
Yeah, and then there are there are some grant programs for the state that are still outside of the community one stop just because of how detailed they have to be. Um, but it it's it's our goal to work with all the towns that we represent to make sure we get as much money from the state back to you to do these projects and it's not on the taxpayers. Or it's not on the capital improvement plan inside of the community, but that the state can partner with you on this. It's it's really been one of the things that from. You know, education funding to infrastructure funding to, you know, earmarks to local community-based organizations. Our goal has been to get every last dime we possibly can and get it back to our community.
I think that um. A lot of folks in Cohasset have also talked about the millionaire's tax that passed that. You know, I was gonna probably hit our residents here, um, and that that money was supposed to go to roads and sidewalks and education. And I guess the question is. How and when and how can Cohasset see some of that money that it's probably going to be paying into that tax as well, particularly as. Grappling with school projects and I'm sure the whole entire state is all asking the same questions, right? Um, and so I don't know if there's any update on the money. And how that is going to be dispersed from the millionaire's tax.
And the FY twenty-four budget is the first time we're going to see it.
Okay.
And so none of the funding's been out the door yet.
Okay.
The House put together their proposal uh for how to spend it. The Senate put together a different proposal as far as how to spend it. And now during conference, we're kind of hashing out. Uh, where where the dollars go and and how they're going to be spent um between transportation and education funding. And so my hope is that we land on something where we get a lot of money out the door. We just passed the bonding. Measure the other day in informal session to reauthorize Mass Works with another three hundred million dollars. And so that's a a huge amount of money that is going to go straight to communities through grant applications. And my expectation would be that a lot of the money that we that comes in through the millionaire's tax is going to go back out the door to our communities. In the form of grants to local projects. It will obviously be some that's associated with. Um, you know, other projects that are more on a statewide basis, but my hope is that the majority of this goes out to local communities.
I think the two takeaways are is that um. It'll be spending in addition to what's going on, right? It's like swapping it out for something else. And that it's, um, I felt like it was really close, like. Forty-nine, fifty-one percent evenly split between, or at least I guess maybe it's that. The House version um was pretty closely evenly split between transportation and education and I. Excuse me, that was commitment. I. I've heard both um the administration, the House and Senate side. So. As it as that evolves through the um through the budget process, I think those are key to.
Okay. Um, I think it would be great also because we're sort of running up against the popcorn wise to hear about the municipal facilities. Uh, Act and the Remote Voting Act because I know that that's a big. Interest here in Cohasset as, as you know, we're grappling with town hall and other demands. Um, as well as remote in our schools.
Yeah.
Um. And then the remote voting too. I think it would be great to. Have a new data.
So municipal facilities, uh, I have a bill that I filed in two sessions uh to really establish a special commission to look into what we can do to fund other municipal buildings. The state plays are all in obviously schools and libraries right now, but outside of that, towns will look to their own devices. I think that. We live in a time where construction costs are going through the roof and we need to be more of a partner with our communities. So I'm not saying I have all the ideas of how to make this happen or how the funding actually gets allocated to this. As you know, with MSBA, it's one percent of our state sales tax goes to fund MSBA every single year. So I want to just bring experts in this field together and say, how do we expand our our availability for infrastructure investments to other projects? And then Senator Comerford uh has actually gone one step further and has. Um, filed a bill to create the Municipal and Public Safety Building Authority, so very similar to the MSBA. Uh, have a system in place that, um, you know, goes forward with that. We have. Word that these hearings are going to be sometime in late July uh on this. And um, that's, that was kind of the update that we got. So I would highly recommend, um, you know, the board, if this is something you're interested in, to take action. Uh, potentially send a letter out in support of um. Either one of these bills. Um, I think that both of them make a lot of sense to to try and do because as, you know, we said earlier. The the availability for communities to fund this on their own is becoming. Um, really dependent on town meeting and infrastructure falling apart.
Great, thank you.
And then remote voting.
Oh, the remote voting, um, so we were. Um, in conversation with town manager um about the warrant. And we we did some research um before filing anything to see where things are going. And in fact. Um, both um Senator um Olivera and Representative Miljusko. Have both filed um essentially bills that say. Regardless of whether it's open town meeting or representative town meeting. They're pushing for that that there can be participation in the community choosing to use them. Um, those have not had hearings yet.
Okay.
A few of our colleagues have filed Google petitions and first one was written in April. And interestingly enough, it, one of them is Wayland, um, which is actually open town meeting. So I've called in to my colleague, Representative Jenfiled, to see what the discussions have been so far. And then debate depending on what he tells me, um, uh, we'll we'll probably look to um. Do something very similar to what he's done. But I think what's important about Cohasset's. Warrant article is that um sometimes when you're, this is a big change, right? During COVID, they were able to allow representatives of town meeting, right? Because they knew who you were. You could register, you could assure the integrity of town meeting that it's only the voters, the people that are supposed to be there. The open town meeting, they didn't even go there. They just told us we should have it out of that. Um, you know, clean bills and and physical. Um, moving forward, it's been sort of interesting to hear the discussion, debate among members about whether or not they should allow it. But I think if we're going to keep base of technology. You know, we have to start having these conversations and if you're comfortable with it, since you voted in a town meeting. I think adding Cohasset's voice as um a home role position. This shows one more community with open town meeting that's prepared to figure it out. So. I'll continue to do the research with my colleague who filed it and um we'll continue dialogue with um town manager and um get something on the record for you. Um, to to make sure it's substantially similar so that we're all pushing in the same direction. I just don't want to do something. Different or take a different approach. I want to try to align ourselves so that we all get them at once. Just a little strategy talk.
And and that's pretty much it. And, you know, despite the fact that we need to do more at the state level, um, you know, we're really proud of the work that we've been able to do in. Working with you and collaborating and making sure that, you know, the community is as strong as it can be and that people have the best opportunity for quality of life that they. They possibly can. And that's the end of the game, but we know that there's challenges that the community is facing and we want to address that on.
Um, consider.
There, are there any questions that regular members have?
I just, just a quick um. GSA.
Yeah.
Um, we both hold office hours. Um, we both contribute excellent services. If anyone needs us, call us, email us. We're here to help regular people navigate state government and I just want to make sure. Uh, it doesn't always occur to everyone to ask. So just if you think you need help. If it crosses your mind to call us, please do.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I just have one quick comment about the um. Remote voting and and participation at at town meetings with the recent surge in. Of AI and its capabilities. I think that has to be factored in factored into how we handle the the technology. Of remote participation because you can, you can synthesize voices, you can synthesize locations, AI can do a lot of things and. You you know, I know the federal government hasn't caught up to. Any kind of regulation on it, but it it is a concern.
I will just say this is a big change of even contemplate. Um. Representative town meeting participation sway was huge to get to open town meeting. Um, I mean, don't forget, you have to make sure if you do it, every single person. Can actually avail themselves of it. So it it would be a big undertaking, but you expressed interest in it. You took, you're interested enough that you actually took it to town meeting and town meeting is was voted for it. So I think it's an important thing to say, um, but it's just the beginning of the conversation and the technology is going to be, and the integrity piece, but it's going to be an important piece of it. Um, but it's, you know, it's what town we voted. So it's not a bad thing to, um, it's it's actually a positive thing to say, you know, we want to keep pace and we want to make sure everything's acceptable. And I'm sure, um, when when I read through the bills, they're really, what? The home rules are super simple, um, but, uh, you know, when we read through the the two main bills, it's, you know, also takes into account, um. Handicap the same disabilities, super simple disabilities. So. Um, so I think it's an interesting thing. Uh, I think it's visionary and it might not be ready. Uh, but that's why we do the legislative process for updating master of laws. It needs to be thoughtfully and intentionally done. It needs to be timely, relevant, and it needs to be well done. So, um, we don't always move quickly and sometimes that's a good thing. That's a very.
Yeah, um. What I've been hearing is, and and I strongly advocated two years ago. I think especially with AI, I'm not sure there's the. Pressing demand that we envisioned two years ago. Um, and I think part of that is because a lot of the issues have been dealt with. But as people start looking at it, unforeseen issues are starting to come up. So. I think it's better to make sure we do it right than jump into it. And quite honestly, at least I have not heard a tremendous amount of. The demand that that we heard two years ago. I think most of the people that I hear have other things that they would put as a creative priority.
I think there's always a surge in demand around town meeting. Especially when people want to go and they can't. That's, so it might not be a consistent. Voice, but it's a, it it spikes a lot around town meeting because people are interested and do want to attend. And um on the AI AI front, I do think that there's. Ways and safeguards to address this, including the use of AI in the first instance. I take your point now and about security measures. Um. And I think I said this at town meeting, the the amount of money that turns through our economy through a virtual setting. Is almost unfathomable in terms of shareholders who are voting remotely. Um, there's so much done remotely. I've done, you know, federal prosecutions remotely that are worth half a billion dollars. And so. I I do think that there's an acknowledgement that. There's a need for virtual and remote, including for people who I do, I I think have some accessibility issues. Um, when you looked at who was voting, it was interesting when you look across the audience. It's not necessarily one generation or another. There's a variety of people that would benefit from being able to access town meeting from their homes. Including Homebound and others. But anyway, I just want to throw that out there because I do think that there's a lot of faces to this issue.
Uh, I've definitely heard interest from people in Cohasset, but I would also say there's unanimous support for doing it right, doing it securely. And taking into consideration all the potential pitfalls, but there is definitely interest.
Yeah.
And as a sentence, the beginning of a conversation.
The only last thing that I would say is the um. The citizens petition that's gotten the most signatures for our town meeting in the history of Cohasset was then is the navigation pilot. Which is of extreme interest to Cohasset, the navigation bylaw.
Oh.
That passed. Um, which, as you know, is going through the AG review process as we speak. And there's been some executive agencies that have written to the AG as well and. Um. You know, I would just advocate for your support to the extent that you can provide it on behalf of this very important issue.
I would say tremendous, tremendous.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck with your goal setting.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a smart word. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
See you.
Take your time. Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you.
I always do see you likewise.
All right.
Thank you.
So Justin, you want to end this portion? Is that what you want to? Okay.
You want to just. You want to make people announce the better ending.
Okay, I think we're going to be ending this portion and moving to a different room to do our goal-setting workshop. And so, you know, folks are always welcome to attend, but. Um, including in person, but I just wanted to end that session.